Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the July 8th meeting of your Aiken City Council. At this time, we're going to rise if you would for the invocation. We will have the pledge which will be led by our County Veterans Officer, Mr. Dwight Bratton. So if you're inclined, please rise for the invocation. Gracious Father, we come to you tonight with heavy hearts because one of our own was injured today. Father, as a city and as a council, we want to lift up this young employee who was injured in an accident today for our city. We pray that you would be with him, strengthen him, pray that you give him healing, Father. We pray for that family and all those people who were working around him, Lord, that you would touch and be with them and strengthen them at this time, too. Father, too many times we take for granted the day-to-day jobs that our city employees do to provide the services to our citizens. So we pray protection on all those employees right now, Father, that you would watch over them and strengthen them. We ask that your guidance would be with this council as we make decisions. May they be pleasing in your eyes and may everything we say and do be in an orderly way that would bring honor to you. In your name we ask it. Amen.
Please join me now as we reaffirm our allegiance to this great nation. Our budgeted citizens should live life in the United States of America and into the republic where there stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dwight, thank you so much for that. Our guidelines for our city council, we certainly expect everyone to have a decor that would be acceptable and representative of our government. If you wish to speak on any of the items, raise your hands and I will certainly recognize you. Each person will be given five minutes to speak. We ask that you keep your comments to the topic being discussed. If there are any questions from council, a person will be allotted more time to speak to that issue. And we appreciate you following our guidelines just so we can have an orderly meeting and so that information can be transferred so that we can make the best decisions possible on this council. And with that, I'd like to represent, like to recognize Councilwoman Lessey Price for additions or deletions to the agenda. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To our mayor and council, there are no additions or deletions to our July 8th agenda, so the motion is made that we accept it as presented.
Very good. We have a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. All those in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. The minutes were distributed for council's review before our meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Walts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Jerdo. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous.
I think Ed Jerdo gave a salute to it as well.
Now, say, Ed, for doing something first. Good job.
Duly noted for next week's minutes, right? All right. Under Presentations, we have a proclamation recognizing Hankinson Boxing Gym. And I'd like to read this at this time. And we're proud to have you here today. Thank y'all for coming. Whereas Hankinson Boxing Gym has a goal to help the youth to be successful adults, and whereas Hankinson Boxing Gym was founded on May, in May 2015 by James and Brittany Hankinson, and whereas James and Brittany have opened their homes and backyard to young athletes throughout our community to build healthier bodies, sharper minds, and better lives through discipline and training. And whereas seven members of the Hankinson Boxing Gym participated in the USA Boxing National Junior Olympics in Madison, Wisconsin, and whereas at that event, five local boxers earned medals, including two gold medals for national championship victories. And whereas Jabriana Hankinson won a gold medal in the intermediate female 154-pound weight class, Angel Cummings won a gold medal in the junior female 176-pound class, Tyrania, I mispronounced that, didn't I?
Tyriana.
Tyriana. Hankinson won a silver medal in the junior female 145-pound class, Tyson Pitts won a silver medal in the intermediate male 176-plus class, and Kendall Brockington won a bronze medal in the junior male 165-pound class. Now therefore, let it be recognized that the mayor and city council do hereby congratulate and recognize all of our winners are named for winning these championships and representing our city and applaud all the athletes who train at Hankinson Boxing Gym. We are proud of you and your accomplishments and thanks James and Brittany for their dedication to our youth and our tomorrow. And I would look for a motion at this time.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Duar. Thank you, Councilwoman Price. All those in favor of this proclamation, please raise your hand. And of course, that's unanimous. And can we give them a round of applause? Then I would like to ask if I could give one to James. And every member of council has one, so we're all going to present one to the five medalists. So if everybody would come up, James, if you'd have the medalists come forward so each council member could stand by them, we'd love to have a photograph. We'd be honored to have a photograph with your team. Please have, everybody's welcome to come up on the team, but we want the five who are recognized. And we're going to come down here with you, stand with you to present these.
I have two from us.
Those five would make room for councilmembers to stand beside you. So raise your hand if you won five medals.
You got the wire on your camera.
Did we get everybody into?
Yeah.
I can get one.
That's like my brother's.
This direction.
He must have been the heavyweight.
How you doing? Brittany has a few words she's going to say about the program while we walk him back.
Okay. I would like to say that Hankinson Boxing Gym, we have a lot of youth that come in and out, but with this sport, it takes a lot of dedication. And we have a lot of kids that are very dedicated. And they could be doing anything, like being in the streets, you know, just hanging out, doing anything. But they dedicate themselves every day, and I'm proud of all of them. And thank you, everyone.
Can we get everybody to say our motto? Gloves up.
Say the motto. One, two, three.
Gloves up and down.
And I'm going to recognize our city manager for one more presentation of recognition, if I could.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would like all the veterans of the Armed Forces to stand and be recognized at this time.
And we appreciate you being at our meeting. It means a lot. Thank you for your service.
I would just point out that the outstanding work that our County Veterans Office does, and we're going to hear more from them later, but they are providing superior support to veterans of Aiken County. They're outreach to those that need the help, and they're just on marvelous work. And thank you, Dwight, for your work.
All right. Moving down to old business item number one, discussion of appointments to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Ask Mr. Beanball if he would, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have any pending appointments for council consideration tonight.
Very good. Are there any names to be considered at our next meeting from council? All right. Very good. Thank you. Item number 200 old business, this is a second reading in public hearing of an ordinance annex 109 Marvin Drive and Zone at Residential Single Family RS10. By title and ordinance annex to the corporate limits of the city of Aiken, certain property located at 109 Marvin Drive to the zone and same, and to zone the same residential single family RS10. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Jerdo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Duar. Appreciate that. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. The applicants tonight are requesting the annexation of 109 Marvin Drive and zoning at Residential Single Family RS10. The Planning Commission considered this request at their June 11th meeting and unanimously recommended by a vote of those present that the property be annexed and zone residential single family RS10. Council heard this at first reading on June the 24th, and is before you tonight for second and final reading.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of this zoning on second reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Down the agenda to old business number three. This is a second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to rezone property at 955 Colony Parkway from residential multifamily high-density to office. By title and ordinance, amending the zoning of real estate located at 955 Colony Parkway from residential multifamily high-density RMH to office O. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Jerdo. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant and owner requesting that the property at 955 Colony Parkway be rezoned from RMH Residential Multifamily High Density to Office O. The proposed use, if this zoning is granted, would be for a beauty salon. And council, excuse me, the Planning Commission unanimously, by a vote of those present, approved this request at their June 11th meeting, and council approved it at their June 24th meeting. And it is before you tonight for second and final reading.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor on second reading, just raise your hand. And that passes unanimous. Thank you. I am going to go back because I was remiss in missing something when we did our presentation for the Hankinsons. I have a comment from Ms. Gildeigs. And I told her I would read this, and I didn't, so I'm going to go back to this. "To James and Brittany, I apologize that I can't be with you tonight. To recognize you for all you have accomplished with this program. I have followed you and attended your events these past four years and continue to be impressed with your mission to save kids from the streets and help them grow into successful adults. You have built confidence to those with low self-esteem, provided meals because you know kids do better if they're fed. You always stress the importance of education and encourage a can-do attitude for them all. I thank you for your commitment to this community and congratulate you all." So please forgive me for not saying that earlier to our participants in the Hankinsons, but Ms. Diggs is watching at home, or she's away, but she was watching online and wanted to make sure that she knew that she cares about your program and congratulate you on your success tonight. Moving down to new business. This is a first reading of an ordinance to approve an amendment to agreement with Mont Morenci Couch and Water and Sewer District by title and ordinance allowing the city of Aiken to amend its agreement with the Mont Morenci Couch and Water and Sewer District, Inc., regarding the provision of water and sewer services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Jerdo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Duar. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. We have tonight a, this ordinance, initially it was passed in 1996 as the area to the southeast of Banks Mill Road began to be developed, which is now Foxhaven and Deodors Plantation The water districts are set by the county council. That is the water district of the Mont Morenci Couch and Water and Sewer District. However, they did not have the capacity to provide sewer back in the day, so we began providing sewer to them. The complicating factor and the reason why this amendment to the agreement is before you tonight is when this was developed, and again, the last amendment was in 2002, there is no way to shut off, if folks don't pay, we bill the folks sewer and solid waste and stormwater, Mont Morenci Couch then bills them for water. So we need to have a way to impress upon these folks that they need to pay. So this new amendment for future development as part of any parcels being developed, a water shut-off valve that the city of Aiken can use will be included in the development if the customer fails to pay their utility bill. Certainly, we do not want to shut off sewer. That's an environmental, the effluent would get, raise the ire of de-hack, and it's a health issue. And it allows us, at our expense, if we choose, we can install a shut-off valve at a current property. I want to commend our folks in engineering and utilities and finance. They worked very diligently with our sister utility at Mont Morenci Couch and Water and Sewer to develop this, and I think for future new development within this area, our ability to have people pay their bills will be increased tremendously by having this shut-off valve that we have access to.
Very good. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council?
Are you talking about just doing this on an as-needed basis, right?
That is correct. If they don't pay their bill, that is correct.
Let me go in there. Okay.
You're going to turn their water off if they don't pay their sewer bill?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
I'm sure that I understood that.
But again, the reason why we need this agreement is we do not provide their water. This is one of the few instances where we provide services, utility services, that doesn't include the water utility service.
Right. Okay. All those in favor of the ordinance change on first reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to new business to item number two. This is approval of a resolution authorizing a contract with the city manager. By title, a resolution authorizing the city of Aiken to enter into a contractual arrangement with the city manager. And I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Walts, Councilman Jerdo. I'd look for comments from staff from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the approval of a resolution authorizing a contract with the city manager. Recently, the city council was in discussions regarding the evaluation of the city manager, and the city council has recommended that the city manager be granted a new contract. The contract would begin July the 9th, 2019, and end July 17, 2020. Salary would be $137,800 per year. Also included in the contract is a clause regarding termination benefits. If the employee is terminated by city council, even though the employee is willing and able to perform the duties of city manager, the city agrees to pay employee a lump sum cash payment equal to six months' salary and to continue to provide and pay for hospital, dental, and medical benefits for six months following termination. However, if the city manager is terminated for cause, such as misconduct or conviction of a felony, or the city manager voluntarily resigns the position, then the city would not pay termination benefits. For city council consideration, this is the approval of a resolution authorizing a contract with the city manager.
Thank you. Comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Okay. All those in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to new business to item number three. This is an approval of a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the State Infrastructure Bank for funding for the Whiskey Road Transportation Alternatives Project. By title, a resolution authorizing the city of Aiken to make application to the State Infrastructure Bank for funds for the Whiskey Road corridor construction. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jerdo. Councilwoman Gregory? I do that every three meetings, Donna.
I was going to say, it's nice to have you call her that as opposed to me, Councilwoman Gregory.
Can I take that as a second?
I'll say that as a second.
Thank you. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we have had, by my count, five presentations about this over the last two and a half years, and we have been waiting for the State Transportation Infrastructure Bank to open up the application period again. In mid-May, they did. The deadline is August the 1st. You recall, you may remember that last August, we had a special work session of city council where Rick Tool of Venice Engineering gave a detailed presentation about the need, and he was back at the work session this afternoon to summarize what the application will consist of. It's something we've been working on for well over a year, and we will be ready to turn this in by the deadline of Thursday, or excuse me, by the deadline of August the 1st.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council? And all those in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. We move down to petitions and requests, and I will recognize our city manager.
Yes, we have today Joy and Aiken requesting permission to hang two banners between March 2nd and March 14th of 2020 on the arches at each end of the alley, and also that the fountain on Newberry Street be dyed red during the festival week of March 5th through 13th, 2020. Joy and Aiken would furnish or purchase the dye for the fountain.
Okay. Very good.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Councilman Walts, thank you. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. We move down to items of information. Anything under issues and updates?
Just, this is not very common, but we do not have a Planning Commission meeting tomorrow, which is the normal day because no applications were received for consideration. And also, I bring to council's attention, the municipal association has their regional advocacy meetings. You may remember, we hosted one. They tend to alternate between Aiken and North Augusta in this western central Carolina area, and it's in North Augusta this year on August the 21st.
And we have our county veterans officer here. Dwight, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you.
Big, big moment.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to have the opportunity to address you concerning a opportunity to continue to recognize our veterans, not only our current veterans, but those that have gone on to what we call Final Formation. So it's a chance for families to be able to do that and recognize them and to continue to develop and show the strong bonds that the city of Aiken has, and of course, we hope that reflection will continue on through Aiken County as we go forward. What Chairman Copper has just handed out to each of you is a one-page report that discusses the Hometown Heroes Project. Specifically what this is, the program has been very successful up in Scotch Plains and Fairwood, New Jersey. The nice thing about this overall program is a personal and visible way to be able to honor military veterans two weeks prior to Veterans Day and again before Memorial Day. What we're looking at is double-sided banners. You can see by the example that's there. These banners, of course, are going to, in terms of heaviness and durability, they should have a, normally have a life for those of about five years. But the unique thing about them is they would be able to be presented throughout town by using the different lamp posts and different hangers that we have out there, possibly, again, spreading, we'd like to have Aiken come onboard initially, and then ultimately we can bring in the other towns and cities from Aiken. But again, the cost itself would not be borne by the city. It would be borne by families, the individual veterans, through private donations or through businesses, and it would be considered tax deductible because those costs would then go through Aiken County Veterans Council, which is a nonprofit organization as we go with that. And then through that, they would be able to have those created, and then they would be displayed at specific times in coordination with the city of Aiken. The application process itself would come through my office for, the Aiken County Veterans Affairs Office for vetting. That would include bringing in a DD 214, which is a report of separation for military members. And then, of course, we'd want to have a photograph of that veteran in uniform. We're looking at establishing that through the Aiken County Veterans Council website, as well as have a paper version of that in our office. The opportunity there, again, would be that families of veterans, veterans, again, organizations out there, private organizations, would be able to honor those veterans that have served through the display that would be, if it's in Aiken, would be allowed up top. So that's the big thing we wanted to look at. We would also look at setting up, again, through the Aiken County Veterans Council website, an email address, or if there was any inquiries or any concerns about anything. The other big thing we would look at is limitations. Limitations on those banners themselves would be based on what is available within the city. If we actually have more veterans banners to hang than we do have locations, then, of course, through that, we would be able to establish by lottery, or we'd be able to rotate them through with the two opportunities that we've mentioned already per year. So that way, it would be an opportunity to recognize those veterans for their service and what they've been able to do. Any funds that would be raised in excess would, of course, they would be retained within the Aiken County Veterans Council Treasury. That right now, for the Veterans Council itself, almost all funds are pretty much expended other than what we may need for operating costs or specifically for veterans in need. So that's some of the things that we do with the money as we go forward. And then, of course, after, dependent upon what would be decided on it for a number of years, any remaining funding then, of course, could be used for any other issues we need specifically that's veteran-focused. So that was the intent for what we're looking at there. We would want to look at for those veterans that have given the ultimate sacrifice, that were either killed in action or are still missing in action, we would want to have specific places of honor for them within the city itself. And then for the rest of the banners, those other banners would be hung through the city as available by the posts and what the city has to offer. Again, with the permission on that, we would also want to look at doing an online archive where those banners themselves would then be displayed along with the website. We could, of course, develop links from the city itself and from the county site so that loved ones and family members would be able to continue to look at that and enjoy the banners that have been created for their veterans. Any questions?
I would just point out, I was pleased to have been at a meeting where this was discussed early last week. There are different faces on each banner. It's not the same person on both sides. So you could, for example, as we have in numerous cases in Aiken, you could have a father on one side and a son on the other side for those cases where both father and son have served, or father and daughter before I get attacked. And these banners would, you'd use them maybe one year. If you'd got more, you would have different ones. So once you get one banner, that may be up for a while, and then it may disappear for a while. Privately paid by companies that might want to support veterans. We've got great veteran support in this county. So it should be very, it should be self-funding and a great way to recognize those who have served. It's a great program.
How many banners? We have. Currently, our office is servicing 14,348 as of today, sir. And how many banner hangers do we have on post, do you know?
I do not know that number. That's something, we would certainly have our staff from Public Safety that hangs them work with the Veterans Council on identifying the best locations for them.
And the other point is that, let's say one of our big companies wants to have a banner, they can put it on their own property at their entrance as they go in. So it doesn't have to be just the city. I think Chairman Bunker talked about being able to put about 12 of them inside the county government building. So they could be all over the city in addition to where we would allow them to be placed.
And Councilman, again, that number that I gave you earlier, that's the veterans, again, that my office serves within Aiken County. the veterans, again, that my office serves within Aiken County itself, not within Aiken city limits specific. I can always get a breakdown on that by zip code and we'll be able to get some curious and actual numbers. Yes, ma'am.
Just a personal comment. Last year, and may I represented you at this event at Montana Baptist Church, and I've never attended a worship service that was totally focused on veterans, which is kind of unusual. And well-attended, but what was most impressive to me, following the service, is to go into their gymnasium and rows and rows and rows of veterans who had served us and had given their life to our country. And then there was eating to share stories and it was just a fantastic experience, mostly for our young people to see the sacrifices and to see the ages of these young people and older ones as well that have given their lives, but quite, quite a personal experience for me to see that.
And that, that is really a tertiary byproduct of having the opportunity for this is when you have the banners up, not only, of course, family members, but you're going to, you're going to start having questions from that younger generation. And through that, you're going to have the opportunity to hand down experiences and then, of course, it's also going to be able to hopefully cultivate, again, a sense of patriotism, citizenship, those areas that we really need to continue to be able to pass on to our next generation moving forward.
I, I was intrigued with the young people as they walked down rows and rows and as they looked at the ages of 20 years old, 22 years old, they were, it, it was an umbling experience to, to see young people had given their, lost their lives so early fighting for us.
Councilman DeWor?
Yeah, just two other numbers of importance. Today's USA Today mentions a fact that I think only 29% of our population, young men and women, are eligible to serve, eligible to serve in the military. The percentage who actually serve, correct me, it's either .04 or .07.
.04 at this time, yes, sir.
.04, so .04 of our population are serving the country. So they deserve the recognition.
And just want to highlight Mr. Johnson, who has served well within our military and noted for that, so, uh, he's sitting beside a good man that has given time and service. And many others, that's not sliding anyone else, but I, Richard has given quite a bit of time and service and loves to acknowledge that he is a veteran, so.
I will say, traditionally, whenever I address my soldiers and now when I have an opportunity to speak in front of folks, I'll always preface anything that I speak with about we stand on the shoulders of giants, there's one of your giants.
Thank you for all you do.
Let me just say to Chairman Colepool and, and Mr. Brad, thank you for bringing this program to us. I'm going to have, I'm going to have Mr. Beanball reach out to you maybe in the next week and let's try to form a, make a formation of what this would look like in Aiken and bring forward what that program will be for us, okay? But thank you for this, great, great idea and great concept. I think, I think you can see there's a lot of support on council for this. So thank you. Anything else under issues and updates?
I would also like to point out too, that we did get from, as you know, we belong to a municipal insurance pool and we received a surplus check of $144,689 due to the overall favorable performance. And they notified us that we can expect to receive a check in June of 2020 for $144,458. And again, we were one of the founding members of this trust in the early 80s, so it has paid dividends a lot of years.
And I can remember a meeting where it went down to zero.
Yes.
And now all of a sudden, we're back this high and congrats.
I would like to compliment our risk manager, Lex Kirkland. He, and, and our supervisors and department heads, they do take safety seriously.
Thank you.
Our April city manager.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, that, that concludes the business of council, but we, we need to go back into an executive session, so.
Be in motion.
In a moment, I'm going to do that, but I do just want to, one more time, just ask our, our city, if we would, to hold our, our young employee who was injured today in your, in your prayers. He and his family and the crew who are with him, they're, they're going to go through some things where they're going to need to be held up, so if you would, keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
Yes, we, we do have our employee assistance program and counselors will be available. We will be pulling our solid waste staff at, they'll off the road temporarily tomorrow around, at lunchtime to meet as a group and those that would like to speak individually to the counselors, that will be available for them and certainly they can make appointments for additional times, but we have arranged for that.
Thank you, sir. Does our motion to go back into executive session? Mr. Walts, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you for being with us tonight. We will come out to adjourn, but there'll be no further business.